Tom, 6:00 PM, Council City Innocent now convening to a private session. Tonight's vacation will be given by Reverend Owens from Poppy Mall.
Our great Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for just blessed to see another day we've never seen before, God. And you just come in this meeting, oh God, look upon each and every one in a special way, Lord. Lord, we invite you in the meeting, oh God. Hallelujah, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you, and let your glory flow in the room tonight, Lord. We bless you to bless the city council, their families, their home, everyone that lives in here tonight, oh God. Look on in a special way, oh God. Just come in and touch, Lord, just be in this meeting, Lord. We invite you in right now, in the name of Jesus. Come in and help your way tonight, oh God. This will be on one accord, Lord, one unity, oh God. In the name of Jesus. And we're thanking you right now, God, for your presence right now. Just be with us, Lord, and help us to hold out, oh God, in the name of Jesus. We thank you right now for what you're doing and what you're going to do, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when the nation, the God, the individual, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda item number three, consent agenda. Second. Have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Brody, all in favor, I say an aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, public hearings for a 2609 Water Lake Road.
Mayor, council, we're here tonight to receive report, call the public hearing and consider an ordinance for a change in zoning from local retail district to commercial district submitted by St. Numm Kane for property out of the PC Martin survey, abstract 757, being a hundred by a hundred parcel of land at the northeast corner of Hyde Park and Water Lake Road, at 2609 Water Lake Road. The applicant would like to lease this property for a plumbing shop, which requires commercial zoning. The property is zoned local retail. He also would like to, in the future, put an auto repair service there, which would require a commercial with a conditional use permit at that location. Planning and zoning, review this and recommend disapproval based on the land use plan, and staff's recommending disapproval based on the land use plan in residential zoning for that area. There's, this is the only area that's zoned business and it's done for local retail.
Thank you, Fay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to or against this agenda item? Mr. Kane with us here. Welcome. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
South Numm Kane, my address 11827 Thondale, Box Farm, Texas.
Yes, sir.
And you might, well, can they give me an auto shop in the opening? At least we, you know, they are making the forty years ago auto shop they're running.
Okay. Fay, can you remind the council the history of this property?
Well, um...
I mean, in the different zones. I know it had a conditional use and then it expired, I guess, maybe, or, maybe not saying it correctly.
It never had a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
When the business went in there, they never obtained one from the building department and did not have a specific use permit. And we had several problems with it because of the wreck cars that were there and there was a boat there and they stayed there for several months. And code enforcement had issued several citations to the owner, to the person that was leasing. In the building department, Dale might be able to expound them in.
Shana.
Mayor, staff's recommendations that we follow P&amp;Z's recommendation. Staff recommend the council not accept the request.
Other questions from the council? Any other comments, sir? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to or against this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Other questions, discussion with the council?
Mayor, I do know that this property's had some issues with the, just how it's set up in the neighborhood. I strongly think that it would be advised to go with the planning zoning where we have the recommendation of this property. So that's a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Beck, second from Councilwoman Gutt, all in favor, I say an aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number four B, public hearing, 620 South Armstrong, Miss Brock.
Mayor, council, we're here tonight to receive report, call the public hearing, consider an ordinance for a change in zoning from local retail district. I'm sorry. We're here tonight to receive report, call the public hearing and consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a used car lot in the partial district. This was submitted by Jim Whitley for property of lane sedition lots nine through eleven, block seventeen, at 620 South Armstrong. The applicant has purchased the building. He would like to locate a used car lot sales on the site. Last business was a garage at this location. There are used car lots located to the north of this location and to the south of this location. There has been used car lots in the past on this site also. Planning and zoning has recommended approval and the staff's recommending approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to or against this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Question from the council.
There was any comments back from any of the populars?
No, there was no comments on either case.
Can I make a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the request?
Second. Motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, I say an aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Deny for C, public hearing on the CDVG action plan. Mr. Stevens.
Mayor, council members, please. We're asking the council to conduct the second and final public hearing on the proposed 2013 CDVG action plan. The steering committee conducted the first public hearing on June the eighth. There were no citizens present to provide input. At the conclusion of the public hearing tonight, we're asking you for authorization to submit the plan to HUD.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to or against this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions from the council? Tom, is this the second year that we've spent the majority or all of the funds with exception administration in the minor rehab as opposed to...
Yes, sir. The only other thing last year that we had not included in this plan was the first time loan buyers program.
Okay, so...
That kind of slowed down over the last couple of years. It took us about three years to spend all that money to get that line out, until it picks back up again, where we recommend that money be placed into rehab rather than that program again.
And we're no longer doing demolition, Tom?
It's not the CDVG money.
Other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve this, that we're doing that?
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, I say an aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Deny item five A, the Waterloo Lake Regional Park master plan. Mr. Howerton.
Mayor and council, in this year's budget, we have the first, you have year one, which is the first step in our ten-year Waterloo Park Regional Plan Implementation Plan. And what that project is, is a, going through the process of putting together a master plan for the entire park. Where we are today, there's been several meetings with the consultant, Matera Studios of Dallas, with staff. We've also met with Parks and Rec Commission. On June 27th, we had a public meeting out at the pavilion and Parks and Rec members there and staff and a good number, probably fifty folks, and we may have received half again that amount of comments since that meeting. But we wanted to have a time tonight to share with you where we are and where we're going in order to finish this process. I think the group has received the slides and Brad Moulton with Matera is here tonight to talk about the process a little bit and then to tell you how we're going to finish up. Ask for any input, the gentleman here.
Please.
Greetings, mayor and council. Thank you for having us tonight. As David mentioned, I'm Brad Moulton with Matera Studio. We're working on the master plan for Waterloo Park. We just want to give an update and get your gears rolling on kind of where we are with the public input process and then how we'd like to involve the council and your ideas as well. So as we move forward, this is, some of the presentation we gave of the public input, basically a roadmap of where we were and where we're going to go in the future, where we started with the implementation plan in 2010 and 11. It really lined item out improvements system-wide. The improvements recommended for Waterloo Park was the new master plan. Some of you all might be familiar with the 1984 master plan, which is kind of an original guiding document for the lake and the area and is actually before the dam was recreated. So this document still has a lot of great information in it. We're using it as some background, obviously, that now, 2013, we have some new items to address. So we're using it as background, but it's a great resource. Moving forward, then we moved into a park commission, park board meeting, where we met with them and told them basically our process that we were going to go through. We went out on-site, sighted the tour. We spent several hours, a couple of days on-site, taking picture, videos, really experiencing the site ourselves and just what a jewel it is for the city. And then, of course, we had the public meeting. I'll show you a couple of pictures of that here in a minute. We had over forty, fifty people there. It was a great turnout. And just as Mr. Howerton said, we had received approximately a hundred so comments. So several emails following up. Now we're here today on the map at a council update, just to give you an idea of where we are. And then in the future, what we'd like to take from this is not necessarily your comments tonight, but we're open to those. But also, if you want to email me, David, Robert, Sonny, after this meeting, if you have any items or thoughts of the park, we can do that too. So then we'll take that into a concept plan. We'll be presenting that to park commission. We'd like your input as well during that. And then we'd have a review with the public after that as well. And then we'd move into some cost estimating and really how to implement it in phases. We know we can't do everything at once, but this is an overall plan. This is a dream of Waterloo Park and then we'd be cutting it into phases. And then, of course, it'd be approval of the master plan. So moving on, this was another summary of the park implementation survey, where that kind of word graphic of all the words spoken about, comments from innocent parks, Waterloo was the word used the most in everybody's comments. That just really showed us the importance of Waterloo Park in the system. Can't really read it on the screen, but some of the items that really people wanted to look into, some people were interested in a dog park, some, most people are interested in trails and really just improvements across the board, really natural improvements as well. Then we move right into the public meeting, as we said, forty or fifty, forty-plus attendees. We held it on the 27th and it was ninety-nine degrees or more. So it was a good evening, though. We had a lot of great open discussion. We had some events kind of planned to kind of write on some of the maps, put some stickers on some of the items. We'll show you those here in a minute. Some of the visual preference items that people would like to see in the park. And really, we just opened it up to open discussion. We had lots of members, citizens stand up and speak their mind and their ideas of the park. But really, the overall, over-complencing comment we heard was keeping it as natural as possible. We don't want to redevelop this park into a urban environment. I mean, we really want to capture that natural beauty that's there existing today. As well as there is an overall gratitude towards the city about its current management of the park, where previously in several years past, maybe it wasn't managed as well and currently it's doing well. People are very pleased with the park and are also pleased with this effort for improvement. So then I'll just run through these areas quickly and we basically broke the park into about five different areas so we can really study it in detail. So as we talk about the park in the future, we'll speak about the area north, kind of call this Lakeland Shore, Lakeshore Line. Most of the comments in this area were providing an improved dock, improved boat ramp, potentially a courtesy dock for when you're putting in your canoe or small rowboat. You could actually have a dock to tie it up to, more benches, more tables, and then access to the woods with potentially a turnaround so that once you get into the woods, you don't have to keep going. There's actually a way to turn back around. A lot of people with strollers go too far in there and don't really realize they have to go all the way around. So we're looking at ways to make it accessible so everybody can experience this area. The next area, obviously, is the forested shoreline, one of the neatest areas, I would say, in all of innocent. Just this piece of property is phenomenal. If everybody could experience that, it'd be great. So we're looking at ways to be able to pull some of those accessible routes within this area, but then not disturb that natural escarpment and really provide a safety element to it too. Provide directional signage, really tell people how far they have to go really to get around the lake. That's some informational signage where they are. Repair and maintain the hiking trail, obviously, is what we're really looking at back here. And then the area below the dam, this area contains the horseshoe pits, some of the playground equipment. So really understanding how it's used today and what we can repurpose some of this area for, maybe reorganize the playground equipment to be a little bit closer together so that when you get out of your car, you can walk up to it and still be in the shade and not have to walk so far to each different play element, as well as parents with different kids' ages can actually see their kids at both different play structures. Determining areas of private property that we can delineate appropriately. That's a key item in this area, where there's private homes that back up to this area and we know that some of those areas are kind of blurred because it's just in the forest. There's a nice detail out there right now with the post and cable delineation of a property line. Doesn't have to be a full fence, but really just letting people know what the property line is. That would take the full survey and ideas of where property lines are. Of course, preserving trees in this area is key. Then we look at the area around Culpeper Field and the softball complex. And this is an area where we understand the use of it now and we could understand the use of it in the future. If there is another sports complex, do these, do these ball fields turn into practice fields? I mean, the amount of space you needed for parking for large tournaments is difficult to come by, especially here. And so really, even as practice fields or even as tournament fields as they are today, organized parking with a system. And we heard that too. One of the ideas here is where you can provide parking will actually preserve the rest of your park because you can pave small areas, but then you're not actually promoting people to drive under your trees or drive over the grass, which promotes erosion, which is actually happening right now. The area around the pool, one of the biggest comments we kept hearing was we all drive to Sherman to the spray park. So we want to explore ideas of outdoor splash pad activity, outdoor, something interesting in a modern amenity here. One of the items that came up too was an air-conditioned viewing area in the pool. So I think we've all been in there, had a hundred-degree day. It's a really neat complex, though, as it is right now. And so I think some of these improvements are what the public was expressing. This area too acts as kind of a park within a park. Not just the baseball fields, but the sand volleyball area and really that small grass area with the creek and the trees. I think its potential could really be expanded with benches and accessibility. And the public mentioned the small foot bridges that go over the creek are not really accessible. Just some of these small improvements that could really bring up accessibility to this area. And this is another area where parking could be organized to kind of not promote driving under the trees, where we would actually put in a small park road with maybe parallel spots and people would actually be organized when they're finding their parking spots. Moving on to the kind of visual preferences, these were some of that sticky dot activity. The numbers under the pictures are how many stickers that people put on them. And so as we were talking about trails, obviously, the number twelve and seventeen were kind of those naturalistic trails that people really were drawn to. Some of the organized sports activities, disc golf or frisbee golf was kind of an interest to people. An improved shoreline and pier, that number eight and nine kind of came up and really maybe an additional rental facilities. The Parks Department has mentioned how full that current facility is. It's just booked and vacant booked. And so there's actually potentially the use for an additional rental facility, meaning a pavilion or of some sort. Park signage, really directional signage, branding, ideas of how the park really feels like the same park, whether you're up near the fishing pond or down at the baseball field. Just having that similar signage, logos, arrows, telling you where to go. Some of that's in existence today, but some of it doesn't match. So you could really feel like you're in the same area. Water sports, people were interested in canoeing, paddle sports, small boat sailing, and just how is that facilitated? One of those comments was the courtesy dock. Just some of those small items that could help facilitate these activities. Outdoor classroom, there's kind of already a start of a small area to gather up along the hill on the backside of the lake. Some of these areas could be promoted by the ISD or maybe even a partnership in developing them. And so field trips, that's actually one of the biggest uses of the parks today. A couple of different ISDs come out there and bring the kids and walk around the paths. Where's a place in the park that they could actually sit and listen to a teacher teaching them something about the park? That'd be, that'd be really nice. Another idea was a dog park. What we have done in the past was, when we've designed a dog park, we don't want to recommend a dog park in a place where it's not going to fit. The size is key. You do not want to do something too small because it will be overrun and just maintenance will be an issue. There are areas within the park that we could find that we're exploring and so that's just one of the items that we were looking into. And then just general park improvements in terms of parking, emergency call boxes, some of the areas are so remote from the parking lot, maybe just a quick call box back to the police department or to 911. And then shade pavilions where appropriate. So basically, our next steps are what we're doing today in terms of the council input and update. And I'd like to hear your input either today or by email. And then we can do, we'll be turning those into actually a concept plan on paper and really starting to test some of these ideas and see where these spaces work and how they feel in the park. We'll go through a review process with park commission, council and staff. Then working into cost options and opinions, facing plan, public presentations, and then, of course, another update and approval of the plan. That's the summary and we'd like to open it up for any input or go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Mayor, a couple of comments. A couple of things you hit on that I thought were really great. I have been one of those folks to mistakenly take a stroller on the hiking trail on the backside of the lake and it is treacherous, to say the least. So I do think that some way for folks to get out with a stroller, whatever, and the signage, you know, is really big. I mean, I really do see that our current walking paths and trails are getting a lot of use and I do think we need to try to continue to encourage that. Just, if nothing else, just to try to continue to create a healthy culture in the city for folks to be able to get out and walk and whatever they would choose to do. So I like, I like most of the stuff that you guys have heard and I think it's all been well-received by the communities.
Other comments?
As far as down around the horseshoe pits, that area of the parking, it needs to be a little more defined, in my opinion, the way it's set up, because that can be an issue. You know, again, I live right behind that, so I really like, I like the natural, I like the walking trails. We can incorporate some of those a little more in, especially on that bottom part there, back in there where I call it cave area and the people that back in there. But it really makes a nice adventure for a walking trail and biking if we could some way get that involved.
What areas of the park are we looking at for maybe ADA compliance? Although it's not all of it.
In terms of ADA compliance, the keys, I mean, you need to provide access to an event. So where we're providing an event, such as a play structure, parking lots, those would be all accessible. We can provide an accessible route to the back area of the lake. Not necessarily, we don't, trails and natural trails don't necessarily fall within all of that, but in terms of providing an area to the event is accessible.
Just, I guess, three things to get on your list there. I really like the idea of a place where educators can take their classes and congregate in a place that's conducive to learning and whatever that looks like about in the park. As it relates to frisbee golf and paddle sports, you know, again, I know the frisbee golf is very, very popular. Our frisbee golf course is recognized and used a lot at MLK Park. I would just want to make sure that we need to, right, you know, that folks understand that that's out there because it gets used a lot, I think, doesn't it? I mean, our staff do a great job there. And that's a popular thing that's gaining interest. And then the paddle sports, I don't remember the history. Maybe David or Fay could speak to the history, but that lake had paddle sports and the city took them away years ago. So I don't know, I can imagine why we no longer have them out there, but just want to make sure that we've exhausted that research and that. And I'll probably email you some others. Very productive. Mr. Beck?
The area that I see that needs a lot of work or some more work or attention is right below those, basically, the little league fields in this slide here. The, yeah, volleyball courts get used quite a bit during the, yeah, right in, just that whole area. Right there.
And it's really a neat area right now.
It's a neat area. We've got a lot of challenge with parking up and through there for little league and a lot of people park below there and they do park everywhere, way further erosion. Plus, they tend to walk to try to get up to the stairs from that lower spot. So it would be nice to have some kind of trail or something that ties that in there. And then that might encourage some people that, you know, the kids up there playing and baseball, the other, the smaller young kids might have some access to something down below. Because I don't believe there's any playground equipment that are, or anything in that whole area.
I think there's still a little swing maybe out there.
The rock on the, it's on that north east side.
Yeah, I think it was probably twenty years old when I was playing on it. That's a long time ago. But to that point too, you know, if that's necessary that we have one there, certainly to update it. Otherwise, you know, it may be appropriate just to get rid of it.
Right. And that's part of the accessibility standards, is once we start making improvements to the park in two areas, a lot of that equipment needs to be brought to standard or...
Do you see in your parks that you've done where you have a private companies come in to do the paddle sports? You know, in Dallas, you know, Rock Lake, I see everything from kayaking and sailboat and that's all down to there, so the city operating that private?
Yes, and that's been very successful in certain markets. And so speaking with staff, it would potentially be of interest here if we could find a third party that would be interested.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
Again, never want to miss an opportunity to thank the citizens for how we can fund improvements to that park and to the, to the pool and our parks in general. Those fees are sacrificed by every family dozen that participates. And without that, we couldn't do a lot of things that we do. So certainly want to take this time to appreciate our citizens for helping us make parks like that a reality in this. General 5B, Red River Rampage Triathlon. Mr. Harrington?
Mayor and council, another event that was planned for in this year's budget was, we planned for a triathlon race which we've conducted a dozen or so over the last 15, 16 years. We wanted to reintroduce that. And some key community leaders suggested we look at a triathlon festival and try to make it a weekend event. We brought that before the council in February. And, and the concept at that time was to try to have a Friday race, short in nature, a Saturday morning race. Through the staff's discussions with the promoters, Play Try, we talked about a bicycle race on a Saturday afternoon with activities downtown Friday night and Saturday night. And then the big event was the lake swim down at Lake Texoma and a run along the dam. So we really tried to conceptualize a big event. And I think with staff doing a lot of planning, the chamber, Don and Dale with Main Street and Sonny and I and the promoters, we're, we're at a decision point. We've done a lot of advertising. We're still within budget. But we're at a point now that we'd like for Play Try to speak to the council. And you guys ask the questions if you'd like to ask. Plan B for this particular event, we feel like maybe a Saturday afternoon activity, then an eve, an evening activity. We're still planning on September 21st and 22nd, and then Sunday morning at Lake Texoma. So we're, we're still excited. Waiting to see all the signups from staff and council. And we just haven't seen all those registrations yet. But we know that you guys are working out and trying to get in shape. The good thing is, is we're at a point where we can wait a little longer before any big expenditures would take place. And we plan to bring this item back to the council if necessary or to make a different decision at our second meeting in August is the next decision point. So with that little bit of introduction, I'd like to introduce Stacy Brode with Play Try. She's got a few slides and she would like to visit with you guys for a little bit, give her recommendations.
How like this slide?
With the mouse.
With their mouse?
Yes, sir. You didn't get them?
I can talk to them.
I'm sorry.
Well, and we, we probably have them. If the council look in their reading file, they're in the, they're in the reading file as well from last Friday. Cheryl sent out.
Did you just develop the one size suit?
Yes.
So the first slide that I have, if you have it, is the original projections. And when you look at Friday, Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, well, the only one that's covering any of the costs is Sunday. Friday and all the Saturday events are, for this year, at a loss. So we're trying to make up on Sunday. The numbers really haven't come in like we thought that they would. There's been some things going on in the market where really we've seen 30 to 40% of signups in triathlon across the board in every race I'm involved in the last two weeks of the event. So it makes for very hard planning, especially when you're talking about an event where kind of bring people in, spend the weekend and things like that. So after talking to Sonny and David, we thought about if we were to revise it, what it would look like. And so what I did on the second slide was I took a look at kind of two options that I'd recommend. And one of them, like David was saying, what's great about it is we've spent, I think, about $6,500, $7,000 on advertising. We have, we didn't start that.
How much on advertising?
I think $6,500 to $7,000. That's all that you, that's everything we've spent. There's really not a lot. The good thing about these events is there are not a lot of spending going on until about four weeks out. And that's when we come back to that August 19th meeting. It's really, we only have one more ad that we've signed off to run. We don't have to run it. I've already talked to the guy and we can push it off. That we would, that we're tied into. Otherwise, we can really wait until about four weeks out because that's when you have to start ordering t-shirts and awards and things like that. And otherwise, all the costs come within race weekend when you're paying for things that are going at the event. So I looked at Saturday and Sunday because one of the things we talked about was we wanted to bring people to Dennison. So if we just run a Sunday event, then a lot of people can just drive up Sunday morning. And so we defeated the whole purpose of the event versus if we run a Saturday event, they can come in Saturday evening, do the event. I also think the Saturday evening event will be probably the most popular locally because it's the easiest and shortest and probably the least intimidating. So locally it would be probably more supported because that's kind of what we've seen locally is more people from Dennison signing up for that short distance. And then Sunday, more people will travel for because it's worth it to travel for a longer distance race. So what I did on that second slide is I took a look at best case and worst case scenario. So the first two columns are best case and worst case if we did Saturday and Sunday. Took income and expense, and then what your net is. And then the last two columns are Sunday only, best case and worst case scenario. So it still stays under budget because I believe our budget was $1,000. And so those, those worst case scenarios are still within budget. And so that's why I think we should at least wait until August. Because I do think those numbers are definitely feasible. I haven't had an event that was under 100 unless it was a kids' race yet. At the same time, I'm not a miracle worker. So I'm not a miracle worker. I can't, I can't predict the future. So I don't know. But August would give us a better time to really take a look at that. So we also, last week, I think we had, we're up to 30 registrations. I think last, but some, half of those people are doing all three events. So really we're at 30 in each of the three triathlons, 30 on Friday, 30 on Saturday, 30 on Sunday. We definitely recommended getting rid of the crit because it is the most expensive of the events. And I don't think without the triathletes, it really won't, that crit won't go. It's more of a spectator event. It was never going to make money. And then moving, like I said, the Friday, the Friday to Saturday evening also is less, takes up a lot less time and a lot less resources from the city when it comes to police and things like that. The next slide just talked about what's next to, like I said, the $1,000, but we can push that out if you want. That's your decision. T-shirts and awards are four weeks out. That's the next expense we have. My recommendation is we wait till the next meeting in August. And the biggest thing was do we make the change now or wait the four weeks? And I think we make the change now. So anyone that's already signed up or thinking about it will know accurately what they're signing up for. So, because I don't think we're going to go with all four events for sure. So I say we make it. The only reason I was undecided was we got some national PR last week. The largest registration site, active.com, did the top 10 most interesting triathlons in the country. And we were number seven. So it was good. And I, I think we ended up with like five or six signups right away from it. But at the same time, we didn't get this giant bump. But we did get the award out and that was free. So that's nice. But I still think we probably need to make the change. I was hoping if we got some giant bump, I was going to say leave it, let's go run with it. But I don't think that's going to happen. And then the last two slides were just what the two events were. So, but any questions?
Mayor, from, from my standpoint, you know, we, we really, this was kind of a, a double edged, kind of benefit for the, the city. We looked at it from two directions. One was kind of promoting some healthy lifestyle choices and, and kind of bringing a new event to Dennison. The other thing was a tourism type play. So I, and the only way that really, you know, benefits the, the city is if we can get folks spending the night in our hotels. So I, based on these numbers, you know, I really like if we could, if we could keep the Saturday, Sunday option. And that way we could get folks coming up, spend the night and checking out our city more than just driving up and driving back. I think we have a, you know, we have a better chance of folks hanging around and, and liking what they see. So, from my opinion.
And we know, I mean, again, that the demographics that participate in these is, is very good. Certainly, certainly worth it. We, we know year one's not going to, you would think not going to be near as, as big as what we hope to see in year five. And the only way to get to year five is to get you down somewhere.
What other biking events or say within 100 mile radius or triathlete events are big competing with the state?
Within the same day or within like?
Same day. Who are we competing with? Or I know?
Nothing that I can think of locally. It's one of the reasons. We picked, when I did this, I looked at our calendar and your calendar. So within that weekend, I think there's an event in Oklahoma that's.
Because we were trying to, when we looked at it, there was another event that is in, we have another, we have a big event in, that, that was like, because we originally looked at Labor Day weekend. And then we kind of backed, we kind of went back and forth. That was the weekend that worked as, as well today.
Are you at any leverage, that national press in your own marketing?
Yes, I just didn't want to do it yet until, but yes, I can. I was going to post it on Facebook and do some other things with it. I just wanted, since it was just a couple of days ago, I wanted to wait, see what we decided. Because then we can make the changes on the website and like it's the same event, but just change it a little. So that what they're seeing is going to be the actual event. So if we're going to change it.
Yeah.
I like the fact that, you know, we're at least going for an alternative here because I always felt like this is, we've got to get our foot in the door, reestablish that we're having these things. And, you know, I looked at the whole deal. It's, it's pretty aggressive to begin with. So, you know, if it's this year a loss leader, then I'm okay with that because I think it'll build the future.
So long as the loss is palpable. That's where, I think that was the part we had to make sure.
You have to, you know, see, get the comments at the end and see what we do.
And it's gotten like from within, you know, when I was talking to my husband about it, he's like the other half of Play Try. I said, he, you know, he was like, what? They're going to change it? They're going to, he was, he was like, no, because everyone wants to do it. I'm like, that's great. Then tell them to sign up. Everyone is talking about it and they're excited about it. But that has really become a big problem across the board in the sport. Because there's a lot of events, especially in DFW, and the athletes can afford to wait. And so they don't really care about 20 bucks here, 100 bucks there because they can afford it. So.
What was, was there, was there a narrative as to why we ranked in the top 10? On the most interesting?
I think it was just because it's different. No one does anything like this. No one does a weekend event. There is not an evening triathlon that I'm aware of anywhere. And that's why I wanted to keep that piece because it makes it very different. And there's just really no one offers what we're offering. Sorry.
You have what you need? All right. Thank you. General 5C, 2014 budget. Ms. Wagner?
Mayor, members of the council, you have it for you. And that's just the budget process. And I'm going to go through the slides review on that and answer questions if they want. And have a lot of backup here. So just keep a touch with me.
And just want to, as they're getting set up, just want to remind the council again, if it's necessarily imperative tonight, as far as the decision-making process, this will be an agenda item along really, I guess, every agenda between now and the time we have to topple the budget in September. So certainly appreciate Renee and staff for getting us to this point.
The first page you have here is just a general fund review. A lot of this is going to be some of the same information you saw back at the retreat on May 17. But we have updated some of the information. We brought back recommendations. All of the directors have met with the city manager and he's made the recommendations based on those meetings and based on projected revenues and expenses overall. And you can see here we have fiscal year 2013, which is the current year we're in, projections, revenue at 19.3, and fiscal year 2014 at 19.4. You have some additional revenue for refuse disposal. And then just a little bit of increases in other line items, nothing to speak of. The refuse disposal would be the largest one. Total expenditures currently for this year at $20 million and next year at $20,375. And we'll go over kind of what's included in those expenditures in the next slide. Your total transfers in are 1.4 this year, 1.3 for next year. The 1.4 this year includes the $132,000 from the utility fund that we closed out. That was the one where we paid the steering committees each year. But someone had just budgeted that expense in the general fund from here forwards as we move that balance over. Kind of trying to reduce our number of funds. So you will not have that transfer in next year. Your transfer out is to the rainy day fund. And your revenues over under expenditures this year is a little over $500,000, which makes our days reserve at 64. And last year when we did the budget, we projected 58. So we're well above that. So we're very pleased with everyone and directors and everyone included, all the employees that have really worked to keep expenses down this year. Next year, we're proposing revenues over around $180,000, which will take us up to 67 days. Just a reminder that our minimum is 73 and maximum 110, what we're aiming for. And we'll look at those numbers here in just a minute as well, those number of days. The next slide is, kind of goes over what affects next year, fiscal year 2014, general fund details. And I want to give you some numbers that go along with this. Our TMRS, this is our retirement system. We had a reduction by about 4%. And it affects the general fund by $36,000. So we see that reduction as far as expenses for next year. You have your workers comp reduction. That was around 20%. And that equals or equates to about $30,000 in the general fund. To offset some of that though, we had a health insurance increase of 5%. And that's around $56,000. So I'm glad to have those reductions since we have the health insurance increase. And the city is going to take care of that. We're not, we're not recommending that we pass any of that along to the employees. We'd like to keep the city paying for that increase as well. The water store franchise fee that we discussed at the council retreat, that's 4%, which would go into our revenue stream for general fund from the water store operating fund. And it would be 4% of water sales, which we're anticipating $6 million this year, which would be $240,000. Our pay plan impact is built into the numbers. And that's, slide is next. And we'll go over that. And then they built in a lease payment of $60,000. And we'll talk about that as well for capital. And then we have some one-time capital expenditures built into the budget for police department. The next slide is the compensation proposal. We talked about this at the council retreat as well. The effect of general fund is $331,000 and some change there you can see. And that is built into the numbers that you saw in the general fund review. And that's encompasses the pay plan proposal that has been introduced, that Mr. Hannah introduced at the council retreat that changes some of the grades that people are in, increases those, changes the fire and civil service plans. And also those that aren't impacted by those plans, it would give them, give directors an option of giving them up to 3% for the pay increase.
Let me make a couple of comments on that. Council had seemed quite willing to do a 3% kind of a budget, a 3% number across the board. I want to make sure council has a clear understanding of how the pay plan, pay proposal is being structured this year because it's not a flat 3% across the board. It's, if you're satisfied, you're above, you get a 3%. If you're a general fund employee or utility fund employee and non-civil service. And you didn't get a bump through the reclassification process. Some of those reclassifications are quite substantial. Some of them are. The ones that aren't are around 3%. Some of them are a little bit less. Some are a little bit more. Police and fire run the gamut. Because we also did a comp class on, on those positions as well. Some of those positions are changing. We've added additional grades to the police and fire civil service pay plans. So some officers coming October 1st may only see a 0.4% increase to their budget. But within six months, they'd be able to perform a step increase that would get them well over the 3% total. So it's a complicated system. And I think we're a little north of 3% off in like three and a quarter along these lines on average. But I wanted to be clear that council had an understanding of how that looked. I don't want to, I don't want to adopt a budget and have y'all come back and say, well, we told you flat 3. So it's a complicated matrix how we have it set up. We believe it's fundamentally fair. We believe that you're flex market conditions. We also think there are other market, market changes that need to take place in future budget years. We can't afford to even all done in one year.
And it does reflect the payroll performance model we discussed in length in the, in last year's budget sessions, which the product was revealed by Mr. Hannah in the budget retreat back in May, right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
The next slide is personnel, requests for personnel in the general fund. These are in. These are, we're not recommending these at this time, but we felt that you need to be aware of, these are positions that people are asking for, such as Main Street, a part-time employee, library, senior librarian, return to previous service hours, fire suppression, was asking for two firefighter positions and refuse collection, a new employee. But we are not recommending those at this time, but we did want you to be aware of those requests. The next slide is capital requests, equipment for general fund. The first thing you'll see here is the street scape implementation. And this is the one that Don and Dow is working through, working on through Main Street. And the request for funds would be around three hundred and ninety-six thousand. And we are awaiting grant notification. We should know something hopefully by August or through, sometime through the month of August. Recommendation is if we do receive grant funding for this, that the funds would come from the street bond fund. And we'll look at those numbers here in just a little bit, the balances of the street bond fund. The police two Tahos for patrol and upfitting costs for those two patrol, two Tahos is seventy-four thousand and those will be purchased and have been built in already to the expenditures that you saw on the first page. And the lease purchase that I mentioned would be for those items in red, the 2014 brush truck, a new commercial side loader for refuse and a new five cubic yard dump truck for street maintenance. And we would have a lease for that, it'd be a seven-year lease at sixty thousand per year and that is built into the budget numbers already as well. The next slide just kind of give you an idea of the future for days of reserve. Minimum, like I said, is seventy-three days, maximum a hundred and ten days. And anticipation is it will be at sixty-seven days end of next year and then to our, over our minimum by 2015. And then progressively will increase as long as we don't issue bonds or have new lease payments. Those numbers could be affected by that as well. But it is looking very positive for the city. Fiscal year 2014 decision points, this is the one where we'll probably have a lot of conversation. I don't know if you'll do that now or at the end. That's up to you, mayor. Here are some items that we would like to have council discuss and give us direction on. City Hall remodel, which is around sixty thousand dollars, that'd be for flooring and furnishings to do upgrades here at city hall. As most of you know, fifty-five thousand is our day of reserve for general fund. So it'd take about a day's fund balance if you took that from fund balance of sixty thousand. In-house demolition and mowing. We've looked at numbers to bring in, to bring in the demolition and the mowing in-house. You have, I handed out some paper there, that one sheet paper kind of gives you an idea, rough estimate of those costs. The cost of, the first one has to do with thirty-seven demos, I believe. And that's the one we would, if council wanted us to move this direction, that's how we would budget it at a loss of fifty-six hundred dollars. We feel confident that we can do the thirty-seven demos in-house, I believe. As you increase the number of demos in-house and of course your costs are spread out and you have, you don't, you're not expending as much, you're not losing money like the fifty-six hundred dollars we would budget at a loss. Does that make sense? Do you see the sheet there?
You can do more demos with the same.
That's the same, that's exactly right. Spread that expense across the board.
Fixed cost is high, variable cost is low.
Right. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that council realizes that's not truly a savings over dollars we spend today. It's just we're, we would be spending less than we would today if we did fifty-two mowings or sixty-five, or fifty-two demolitions or sixty-five demolitions.
Because it's, we're based on lease.
It's, it's, it's because our unit cost, right, our variable cost, as council for handling said, is less than what the private sector is doing.
Question on this demolition equipment. Is this equipment existing or is this, I was under the understanding we had the track hoe, crawler, already?
Well, we have certain equipment already, but some of this equipment needs to be replaced for items. Some of the other equipment is, you know, we don't have like a zero turn mower or that sort of thing. And David can speak a little bit about the life expectancy of our current track hoe loader.
We have a track hoe that we use for two stories, but for the single stories, we would like to have what all the other demolition contractors have, that's a crawler dozer, has the loader on the front. And it can do a lot of structures, but we wouldn't have to take our track hoe to every job.
So it's a more efficient piece of equipment to use for a smaller one-story versus if they went out?
Yes.
Any more questions on the in-house demolition?
I guess just one. So the, the equipment operator, a little bit higher level position, right, it's higher grade, but yet that person would be running a weed eater?
No, that's a really good question. One of the things that's very attractive about the proposal stat is that we could have a equipment operator that we could certainly utilize in other aspects of the organization. During the mowing season, that equipment operator would be doing things that were commensurate with their salary and experience and would put another lower experienced, lower paid employee on the weed eater to the right. So we would be able to shift employees around in the workforce to best utilize them for the purposes.
Okay, so where would, at that time, where would you get the other?
Pull them out of public works. At least these employers would be public works employees.
Not the seasonal folks?
Not the seasonal folks. No, we don't, we don't trust seasonal folks or, or riding equipment.
So when we look at demos, because this is all about demos, if you don't get the, this is probably the use of Tom, if you don't get the demo numbers, then this makes, this doesn't, the math doesn't work. So we're on pace to do thirty-seven this year?
That's why we picked thirty-seven. But that is the minimum we've done. We've done as many as eighty in a year.
Okay.
And we didn't want to come to you with a number like that, that may not be realistic.
Okay, so.
We wanted to start something we were comfortable with. Thirty-seven is something we're certainly comfortable with.
Right, so thirty-seven is the minimum we're doing. It looks like, you know, if we did that, you just had a small loss there. So thirty-nine is our break even point to make this make sense. What, part of our issue in the past has been not the number of lots to demolish or the number of structures to demolish, but the process it takes to get them to the points that the council says go. Where are we with that?
I think we're getting better with that time. There's an additional person in code enforcement who's going to be able to work, be working those also. And we feel, the council's orders not to bring demos, continuously bring demos back to you. You're going to see a demo one time and we're not bringing it back again. So that's going to speed, that has sped up that process. So I think that if posting the buildings and getting that paperwork done, we certainly do, do thirty-seven or better.
Okay. Mayor, yes, William.
The, I'm assuming that the demolitions that we have, the time from when we approve it, do we have a long spread of time to get bids and put it out there? Is this going to shorten that time to be able to, in between?
The problem, another delay in the process is right now, we wait until a group of ten or twelve that we have going are finished, then we start another wave of bids. There are contractors that take ten days to tear a house down. We're not going to do that. If we're going to speed that process up, we're going to compress that time and that's when I might be getting some demos too. We crush a house one day and haul it off the next day. Weather conditions permit and everything is going smoothly. So we're going to be able to physically do more of the demolition work. And as the mayor said, the paperwork to get to that point, and I think we've made strides in compressing that time also.
Okay. Tom, again, so with your fixed cost here, what is your maximum number of demolitions you can do with, with this equipment? What's your, can you do eighty with this, without adding additional equipment or labor?
I think we could.
Okay. If we had a year like that, that.
The only caveat is that we're going to have a season to do demolitions and a season to do mowing. So some of this is going to inter twinkle, inter mingle. And that may slow that down, that eighty number down. It's certainly not going to slow the thirty-seven number down.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Question on this, back to this track hoe. Does our existing track hoe have a thumb on it?
No, sir.
Is that something that could be added, this equipment?
We could add it.
Where are we in the life of that piece of equipment?
I'd be surprised if it has over two thousand hours in it right now.
Okay, so it's apparently.
It's in good shape.
So, but you think we need a crawler in addition to our track hoe?
Yes, sir. We need a crawler.
I know most of our demos use the track hoe with a thumb on it. I'm just trying to understand why the crawlers. Where I'm going with this is can we manage with existing equipment if we're only demoing or forecasting initially of three houses a month?
David, you might want to explain that our bulldozers also, if this would replace our bulldozer, we're not.
The, we feel like the most efficient piece of equipment that we've seen over the years has been a loader, crawler loader instead of these bobcats and these other track hoes. Smaller pieces of equipment. We feel like you can move more efficiently and quickly with that machine. It's heavier, it'll mash up all of the debris quickly, more quickly. And I don't know why the guys do what they do. The other benefit.